The July 18th, 2022 City of Vandelia Council Meeting is now called to order. We'll start with a moment of reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is in its name, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to amend this evening's agenda under action items to add the appointment of Dave Arnold to the Planning Commission.
Okay. Second.
Do we need a roll call, Jerry?
No, since this is procedural, just a...
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, council, you've had a moment to review the council study session minutes of January 20th and the council meeting minutes of January 20th. Are there any comments or questions?
June 20th?
I'm sorry, June. Any comments or questions? Being done, they stand approved. And that brings us to Communications, Petitions, and Awards. And first off, we have a proclamation to designate July as Parks and Recreation Month. So we will do a proclamation right here at the podium. It's the park. Whereas if parks and recreation is integral part of communities throughout the town, including the city of Vandelia, and whereas parks and recreation promote health and wellness and improving the physical and mental health of people who live in parks, and whereas parks and recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote an active lifestyle, and whereas parks and recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction, and whereas parks and recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas the city of Vandelia recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Now therefore, I Richard Burks, by the authority vested in me as the Mayor of the city of Vandelia, do hereby proclaim that July recognized as Parks and Recreation Month in the city of Vandelia, and urge all of our citizens of our community to recognize the contributions which parks and recreation make each day to our health, comfort, and quality of life. Okay. We have no public hearing, and that brings us to comments from interested citizens. So if someone would like to make a comment, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment.
Good evening, everybody. My name's John Workman, 1024 Londonderry Drive. I think the question, regarding the question of the hour, if you will, is not so much can this be done, but should this be done? Should we infringe upon, should we severely infringe upon, the way of life and the well-being of so many folks in my neighborhood, along Halifax, along Castle, to put in a warehouse? That's basically what this is. Can it be done? Of course, you know? It's already zoned for it. That doesn't need to change. According to these folks, IEX has said, yeah, we'll sell it to you, but only if you do what we tell you, you do with it. And then, you know, that sounds a little strange to me, but I don't know. Maybe they did do that. So can it be done? Sure. Won't take much effort. You guys just vote yeah, and it gets done. But should it be done? But no one's really brought up, and made me think about it when we were doing the Pledge of Allegiance. I was thinking, I haven't done that, you know, on a regular basis since I was in elementary school at Demet. Demet Elementary doesn't have air conditioning. Windows are always open when it's warm out, get a nice breeze going through. Should we have our children go into Demet constantly hearing beep, beep, beep when they're trying to learn? I don't know. Should we? Should the folks that live on Halifax, that have, I was always jealous of the folks living on Halifax because their backyards had that nice woods. You know, they always had the, you know, always telling me they saw deer all the time. They're always happy with that. Should we take away that happiness for a warehouse? Some of the pluses for a warehouse? Oh, it'll bring jobs. Plenty of places have made a day hiring right now. They, you know, they need jobs too, you know? My daughter used to work out at Chewy. They were always hiring. They couldn't keep people there, you know? High turnover, it's part of the gig for that. So it's not like we're hurting for jobs, all right? Should this be done? All right? I know I vote no, and I think a lot of my neighbors feel the same way. You know, we don't think this should be done. Can the property be rezoned? That can be done? Should that be done? Ah, I think you'll get some smiles from folks for that. One question I do have to ask personally, though, Mayor. I know that you have a background in real estate. So you're very knowledgeable about those things, much more than I am, okay? If a home, if you had two identical homes where one had a yard that was backed up into a nice woods in a nice quiet neighborhood, we got a pretty quiet neighborhood right now, always has been, and you had the same house with their backyard, even though there's, you know, a screenage of trees, beep, beep, beep 24/7? As a real estate person, Mr. Mayor, which one do you think you'd be able to sell quicker? Which one do you think you'd be able to sell for a higher price?
The obvious answer is the one that has the park-like setting.
Yes. So should this be done, or can it be done? Yeah, it can be done. Should it be done? I don't think so. Thank you for your time, guys. Thank you.
My name is Carol Lutz. I live at 475 Halifax Drive. Thank you, City Council, for listening to me. I hope you hear me. Our house is on the edge of the woods on Halifax Drive. Think about this as if you live in my house. Think about 246 trucks leaving their truck engines running for over 30 minutes at a time. Consider that noise, but more importantly, that pollution just 400 feet from your yard, from your bedroom window, from your outside comfort zone. That is what we will have to live with if you vote yes to allow warehouses to be built in the Northwoods area. We have lived on Halifax Drive for 36 years, a resident of Vandelia for 55 years. We want to continue to live on Halifax Drive. Be truthful and ask yourself, would you want you or your parents to live with that air pollution, that noise, those lights 24 hours a day? Please do not allow the warehouses to be built in the Northwoods area. Change things to build homes or offices in the Northwoods area. Remember, you represent us, the citizens of Vandelia. Please act like you care about living in Vandelia.
I live at 405.
Leslie, Leslie, we're all friends. You don't have to get upset.
I'm not upset for me.
Okay.
Come on, hang on, let's be real. I'm upset for me, I live there, on Halifax.
I'm sorry?
No, you can't.
I'm upset because questions of my children. When my daughter, who's 10, looked at me and said, Mom, where are all the animals gonna Where are all the birds that you feed gonna live? This is a child who, for her school, wanted to go and pick up trash on her school property to clean it up so more animals and wildlife could populate that pond. And she did, and she was, we had ducks that started to live there, different frogs and toads that started to live there, and now her school utilizes it for part of the science, or the plans are for this coming year to utilize it for science. My son, who is seven, has asthma. I myself have a heart condition, and if we're going to talk about statistics, no, there are not any neighborhood studies that will tell you the horrible effects that diesel exhaust and soot have on the body, but there are lab studies that show that diesel will break down on a cellular level, people's DNA. It does cause cancer, not only lung cancer, but stomach and blood cancers, including childhood leukemia. I also did some research on diesel, on the effects of vegetation. With the little amount of trees that they say they're going to plan to leave there, it does, over time, kill off deciduous plants and vegetation, which are critical for any, and I also asked, I spoke with Jason, with the Regional Migratory Bird Division of the Department of Interior in regards to federally protected birds. He says if they were to lose that habitat on any level, including air pollution, they will not live there anymore ever again. They will not come back and populate. A lot of them are federally protected, including the northern flicker, which I see on a regular basis in my backyard. I'm a bit of a bird nerd, and I thoroughly love woodpeckers, and the northern flicker is one of my favorites, and we are lucky to have them in our backyard, along with woodthrush, pilated woodpeckers, many different types of birds. So I'm gonna ask you guys a question, because my daughter does not understand. What is more important to you? The lives of the people that live here, this town, or a giant warehouse? At some point, you need to think about who Vandelia is and what it is and what it stands for, and I guarantee you, it is not a warehouse. It is the citizens that make this town Vandelia. So please reflect on questions from a child. What is the best decision for the people and the wildlife that I know Vandelia loves and values? Thank you.
Hello, I'm Elizabeth Langford, and I live at 410 South Brown School Road in Vandelia. I grew up in Butler Township and graduated from Vandelia Butler High School. After getting married, I moved around to different states and have come to enjoy, for the most part, every place that I've lived in. However, I have always wanted to return to the roots of where I grew up, and understandably so, and have done just that. Not only did I grow up here, but so did my mom, my grandparents, and my great-grandparents. There's much to be said for one's heritage, the connection to a place that runs deep, not just in family, friends, school, work, but to the very heritage of the land, the dirt that has been farmland, parks, rivers, and streams. If you understand the heart connection that Native Americans have for the land, if you understand the heart that a farmer has for his fields, if you understand the passion outdoorsmen and women have for wildlife and nature, then surely you can understand the strong and deep feelings that so many residents of Vandelia Butler Township have, even those that are living in the surrounding areas. Certainly, you are not blind, deaf, or dumb to the frustration and other hard feelings residents have had since the building of warehouses on the Dayton Airport property. This is not just about feelings either. The negative ramifications will also include property deprivation and light pollution, noise complaints, water issues, displacement of wildlife. Vehicular accidents will rise, additional calls upon our police and fire departments as if they are not already strained. For the company to say they will go down 20 feet, which is what I've heard before from others, and I think that was illustrated with their drawings, to help alleviate some of these issues may seem like a swell idea, but will only cause problems with the quality of drinking water for the area residents, and as for 20 feet down to lower the light issues, tell that to the migratory birds and residential nocturnal birds and bats. I request that this proposal receive a no from every council member when it is voted on. I will add that all residents will be watching to see the vote outcome, and as it is legally required that the public has access to know how each vote will be given, citizens will not only take that into account when it comes to reelection, but additionally understand the tools that they have, the citizens have, at their disposal. After all, you were voted in for these positions, which are to represent the desires of the citizens, and the citizens recently do not want any new warehouses, period. Thank you.
My name is Laurel Wade. I live, it's kind of funny, because when you look at this picture, my house doesn't exist because the line is on it. So I live at Brown School Road, at the very end, next to the park. I wrote a letter to you all. My grandparents were Joe and Bev Gatten from the city, and I actually have the same problem she does, that my daughter doesn't understand either. She would have been with me tonight, but she's at her dad's. You know, I have, I went to Florida at the beginning of June, and I had, my boyfriend sent me a picture. There was nine wild turkeys on Brown School walking into the park, and we have numerous deer, numerous, numerous animals, I mean, you know that. But my concern isn't just that. My concern is the park. You have no idea how many families use that park every day. I actually get mad because instead of using the park, parking lot, they park it from my house. But people, lots of people use it. Everybody uses it. Everybody walks their dogs. People have picnics in the park right there where there's no, whether the trees are. I actually threw my daughters, not my daughters, but my nieces' baby shower in that park with a tent. Nobody's gonna do that anymore. That park will be, not be used. It won't be used at all. And then we'll just, we'll just take more drug addicts and everybody else from Miller Lane, we'll throw them up to Northwoods too. We're gonna put them up there, because, you know, we'll just have them go up to the RTA, and they'll just start begging up there. And then the little woods that are gonna be left, they'll just go ahead and start camping out in there too. That's where they're gonna start living. And I won't live there anymore. I will move. I will, I will move, and I will move out of Vandelia. And it's sad, because I grew up here. I have lived here my whole life. I moved here, I shouldn't say whole life, I moved here in 1994 from Los Angeles, California. You have no idea how big of a difference that was. I couldn't go anywhere. I couldn't ride my bike. I had, I remember to this day, a man following me. I could have been kidnapped when I was in second grade. My daughter goes to that park right now. Bunch of kids go to that park and ride their bikes, and now we're gonna have to deal with truckers, lots of truckers, that I'm not gonna be okay with. I'm not gonna be okay with. Yeah, there's gonna be some areas between there, but it's not enough. It's not enough. I just hope that you guys, just put yourselves in our position. Put yourself in my house, and everybody on Halifax. Put yourself in our houses. How would you feel? I hope that you guys deny this and think about us. Thank you.
So my name is Tyler Slosson, 1148 Londonderry. So we face Halifax, so our front door is basically looking right at that tree line. So every morning, if we got up, if this was approved, we would see that. So my background, I worked for XPO Logistics as a service center manager, terminal manager. I also built a distribution center for Beldon down in the Gallus, Arizona. So I have 20 years of logistics experience in the military air force, retired of that as well. So let's talk logistics. If you approve this, this area is destroyed, okay? Logistically, it's a nightmare. Taking those trucks from these warehouses, oh my gosh, it'd be amazing. It'd be a congestion from like you'd never seen before, okay? So I'm begging you, do not put these here. This area cannot handle it, okay? Please, thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Fornellius, 1232 Branley Court. I previously sent some pictures to Ms. Schwartz and Ms. Holloway about some ramps in the Copperfield Neighborhood. Recently, they had become quite degraded, and the city had helped replace those ramps and put in some new ramps to correct the uneven pavement, and so I just wanted to come and say thanks to everybody who had helped without, helped out with that at the city. I'm sure there were many people involved, so please pass along my thanks, and then, again, they've got the pictures for your reference later. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Clay Amos, I reside at 17 Centerland Drive. Like to thank the council for letting us all come out here and give us, give you guys an earful. I'm sure you guys are appreciative of that. I want to further on the warehouses. Aside from the other valid points the residents have made, there's a slew of cultural resources in the area that just, quite frankly, are gonna be wiped out. The plans are for a 20, for a 20-foot divot into the ground to lower, to lower the eye level of this warehouse, if I remember the plans correctly. The facts of the matter is, a lot of people define archaeology and cultural resources as arrowheads and spear points and all that stuff. There's a lot more than that. There's pit features, there's graves. All of these things are concerns of mine if we're, because according to local collectors, there have been projectile points, knives, and even some animal bones that have been found in this field. Now, in these conversations with local collectors, I have not had the chance to closely examine these animal bones, but typically, these are indicative of something major that could be being missed. Over the past two summers, I've excavated three separate homesteads under the direction of Dr. Lance Green of Wright State University. The effects of just a simple, of a simple park being placed near historic and prehistoric properties, it's incredibly damaging, to the point that we had archaeological debris freely floating on the trails at the Stevens Cabin site, that is 33 NY 969, for those of you that follow state seriation. There was litter, all, there was debris from the homestead all over the trails. Now, I can't imagine the sort of damage that a warehouse would be doing to that, would be doing to that potential site, or perhaps any sort of dwell, any sort of Native American dwellings, because we've already proven that there is a strong presence in that area. Now, I don't want immense words here. The vote against this should be an emphatic no from every single one of you. This cannot proceed. It is obvious that from all angles, including the areas that I've, including the areas I've worked in, and the areas that everybody else in this room has worked in, that it's just not an appropriate use for this land. Thank you, council.
Anyone else would like to make a comment?
Dave Arnold, 462 Meadowview Court. I just want to say thank you tonight to all of you for approving me as an appointment on the Planning Commission for the future. It has been an absolute pleasure to serve on the Board of Zoning Appeals for the last three years. Of course, you guys know, reading the minutes, that I'm the solar panel czar on there, if nothing else, all of my comments. The only other thing I wanted to say is that we have a lot of openings on some of our commissions, Planning Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, with this large audience tonight. I encourage all of you, go online, fill out an application, find something that you're interested in. There's a, there's a position still open on the Planning Commission. You'll get to serve with me. Big deal. The Board of Zoning Appeals does some incredible work. We have, let me see here, the other commissions, the Arts Council, working with Candace, the Bicycle Committee, don't know much about that, the Golf Advisory Board, surely there's a golfer in here somewhere, and the Housing Code, Board of Appeals. You know, it's, I have served in some capacity here, when I was growing up over in Inglewood. It's important to be involved in the community, and I encourage, instead of just coming to a meeting like this, when it affects you, get involved so you're a part of the solution and the long-term outlooks for the city. So that's all I gotta say. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
My name is Wes Armstrong. I live at the corner of Frost Road and Old Springfield. I'm the last city property in the city of Vandelia, and I have lived here since 1974. So I was here and working for the city when all this stuff in Northwoods was established and approved. It was done with planning for office, retail space, that kind of stuff. It was not established as a warehousing area. I know specifically, the city did not run Northwoods all the way through to North Castle Road even at that time, because of concerns about traffic. I live on Old Springfield. There are not supposed to be any trucks, semi-trucks, up and down Old Springfield Road or North Castle, but they are continuously, including FedEx with tandem trailers, up and down Old Springfield, north on Frost Road, and they continue over into Huber Heights on Old Springfield Road. If we can't control them, how do we control 365 trucks a day? Because FedEx doesn't move anywhere near that much freight, but we can't even keep FedEx off those back roads. Everybody in here knows those roads are not made for that kind of vehicular travel. There are barely two lanes. They're barely two lanes wide. There is no wide berm. For some reason, everybody has stopped maintaining the right of way. If you go to an intersection where there's a three-way, like Brown School and National, if you go to that intersection, there's a really nice landscaped area where you make the right turn, excuse me, to go south on Brown School. It's landscaped, it's, it's really nice. If you go to my house and look out the front door, there's a gravel slot with a big sign with an arrow that points to the right. The ditch lines aren't maintained, the drainage isn't maintained and hasn't been for forty years. I came in and got a building permit to pull a building on my property. And the building department didn't even realize that I lived in the city. I've been in this city for forty years, but they don't know I exist. So everybody needs to understand that those of us who live on the al, I've always lived on the east side of town. First South Brown School, then on Halifax, I bought the property where we've lived since nineteen seventy-nine, at Frost and Old Springfield. It's a beautiful area. I've seen the Kroger go in. I saw a beautiful waterfall, attractive when Krogers was built. I don't know what happened to it. Now it's a pile of weeds. It's not been maintained. And I assume that happened when CSX kinda lost some funding. But nobody's maintained it. Not now. People who, who come recently don't even know that ever existed. But there used to be a waterfall there. It used to be extremely attractive. Kids used to fish in that pond. Pond's not existing either. It was taken over by, by reeds, cause nobody maintained it. So the only thing I wanna say is that there is no way the infrastructure that exists in that area can su, can support that kinda vehicular traffic. The roads aren't wide enough. They're, they've just repaved the area in front of my house with a whole inch and a quarter with a blacktop. That's not gonna hold up under tandem axle trucks coming from, from FedEx, much less a warehouse. So we can try to route traffic where, whatever way we wanna try to route it, but unless there's somebody to force them to follow that direction, that's not gonna happen. And as of this date, it doesn't happen. And like I say, there aren't three hundred and sixty-five trucks a day in and out of there either. So other than that, I wanna congratulate all of you. I think you guys did an excellent job. You always have, and I think you've always thought about the people and the people of the city. I just don't wanna leave people to lose sight of that over the dollar. I know that ground is set empty for a long time. And it would be really great to have the revenue from that. But I don't wanna see warehouses there. I have no problem with it being developed the way it was planned to be developed twenty years ago. That never developed. I don't know why we expect this to work out any better. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
My name is Tommy Kettlehake. I live at one-one-one-eight-zero, North Castle Road, which is at the very top of this on the right. Um, my plea to y'all tonight is I'm tired of running. And it's what I mean by that is, my wife and I, Cheryl, Cheryl and I, we grew up in Huber Heights. We married thirty-one years ago and we settled here in Vandelia. The reason we settled in Vandelia is because Huber Heights was growing so fast and there was so much traffic and so much going on, we said, let's settle in Vandelia and make that our home. So we've been here thirty-one years, twenty-five of that behind the old Fulmer's Market on Greenhurst, driving a nice little brick ranch. But six years ago, we realized our dream. Because that area over there by Greenhurst was getting so busy, we had to run again. So we found a great property, three and a quarter acres out on North Castle Road, that we dreamed of. You know, can we ever live out here one day, just one day? So we ran to North Castle Road six years ago and found our dream home on our dream piece of property. And this is where we're gonna live forever now. And we don't wanna run anymore. We keep running from all this development and all this traffic. And I would love to just stay where we're at and stop running from development. So I plead, please say no to this. Thank you.
Well, we were getting ready to close com, or comments.
Are we done? That'll do it for tonight. Thanks, everybody. Uh, say it's Jack Froshower, Advocate for the City, uh, one-one-six-zero-zero, Castle Road. Before I start, I'd like to point out somebody to you. That's Phil Plummer back there, and that's our state rep. You don't get a, you don't get a state rep to come around often, so that must be a big deal. So that's pretty good. I called him. Folks, I wanna tell you something. I, I, ten years ago was the first time I spoke to you. And, uh, at the end of my remarks, I'm never gonna forget this. Dave Lewis, during the council remarks at the end of the meeting, said, "Mr. Froshower, that might be the most articulate thing we've ever heard here tonight."
It was a mistake.
But just to be certain, then Blanksley said the sa, he was like, "That's what I was gonna say." So that's pretty impressive, and here I am again. Ten years ago, the problem was the brainstorm of running a, a railroad, resurrecting the old railroad track and running it through the country, running, running it across the interstate, making a ton of out to P and G. I called ODOT and even they thought it was the craziest thing they'd ever heard. But, uh, we addressed it and we stopped that one. And tonight Jerry mentioned there was, uh, five, six years ago, uh, another developer had looked at, uh, that parcel. And, uh, I, in that particular instance, uh, I was with Candy, Candice Forrest, uh, Mayor Setzer, a guy named Kevin Sink, who used to be a detective in Butler, and John Cruzy. And we met with the developer, talked to him, uh, asked for buffer and all those sort of things. And, and, and the ask was so big that he decided he would just forego the plan. And that's been it. It's been nice and calm, no problems, but here we go again. And so we got the letter a couple weeks ago. Well, three weeks we've been messing around with this. Now I got a letter today. I can assure you, I can assure you, I'll be here every time in opposition. And so will all these people. But tonight I didn't even have to dream up anything real articulate. I didn't have to work on a, on a planned speech for you, not a thing. All, cause these people all did it for me. There's a hundred and ten people right here. I've seen you many times in your workshops, take an issue, really debate it, really work hard to make sure you got the right decision. Pretty easy tonight, isn't it? There's your, there's the people that live in this city. They're telling you what they, you're obligated to represent them. Pretty easy. They told you how they want you to vote.
Got my water. Got my water. My name's Tom Grace. Address is ten-four-hundred, North Castle Road. Been a resident of Vandelia since I got married in nineteen eighty-five. Been on Castle Road since we built the house in nineteen ninety-one. Raised both my kids here, at the Vandelia Schools, attended Dimmitt, the old Morton School, and then Vandelia Butler. I got great educations. Grew up in Kettering, moved here. Wife, her family were north. You always do what the wife says. But the deciding factor was that the schools here were comparable to what we'd expect, to what we wanted our children to have. So it's been a really good community. During my career, hinges get laid off. Facility I worked at, a nuclear facility south of town, you probably have heard it, mound, was shut down. Got a job in Maryland, working for the Nuclear Regulatory Commission. I'm very familiar with the Dayton International Airport. Used to know much of the staff there by name. I'd fly out Sunday nights. Worked long days, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Thursday night I catch a flight back, so I'll be back here in Vandelia. Did that for just over ten years. During that time, I had the opportunity, I had the opportunity to change my residence to Maryland. Because I spent as much time in Maryland as I did in Vandelia. And there was enough business travel that I could have declared either state my home. I chose Vandelia. Maryland doesn't have a state, a city tax. They have state and county tax. They also have an extra one percent state tax for non-residents. So for the privilege of commuting for ten years, and because of my dedication to this town, I had three percent sucked out of my salary. Two percent for the city of Vandelia, one percent for Maryland. And it was worth it to call this my home. At the Planning Commission meeting, I dropped off a packet, I believe it was part of the minutes. And I believe those minutes, and that was packets were provided to the city council. Are you, are council members familiar with that? Short, four-page letter and the copies of all the documents that I submitted to support my points. That will save us a lot of time, probably about a half hour. I will not go through that in detail. However, I will hit the highlights. What's being proposed goes against the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan was updated in twenty twenty. The annex, or I guess it's the appendix to the comprehensive plan that was done in twenty twenty, twenty-eleven, directly addressed the North Castle Road area. And it specifically referred to the areas having a country atmosphere, a rural atmosphere. Let's sense do that. And I understand that it's not zoned that. I understand, I understand that, that legally it is zoned industrial and office internet, office, um, industrial park. And I understand the zoning is law, and the comprehensive plan is policy. There are some indications in court cases where the comprehensive plan for a city has been interpreted to have nearly the same impact as law. I haven't researched that yet. I just came across it late this afternoon. But it was from a conference up in Cleveland a couple of years ago, dealt with cities in Ohio. Found out that zoning this way is known as Euclidian zoning for Euclid, Ohio. Apparently was the first city in the state or in the country to practice that type of zoning. A little bit of history for you. This also goes against precedent that was previously set, previously set by council. Jack was kind enough to allude to the Capstone project, where he tried to put in two plastics manufacturing facilities on the north end that is zoned industrial. That didn't go, um, didn't go in. I understand that. There is the Cedar Cliff, uh, development, that is my neighbors. That original parcel was intended to be divided up into nine properties. There's supposed to be three in back and a cul-de-sac with six. At the time, council decided that having that cul-de-sac with the density of those homes being on roughly two acre lots, acre and a half lots, didn't fit the character of the community, did not fit what was planned and envisioned as you drive down North Castle Road. There was a motion to recommend the reboot, the withdrawal of that, that proposal. It was not seconded by another member, another member of council. I'm gonna need water. It was not seconded by another member of council. There was no motion, there was no vote. However, the owners of that, that property voluntarily withdrew that request. Paid an engineering firm to redraw those plans. And now there are three properties in back and there are two properties in front. That was acceptable. It was acceptable to the residents up and down the road. It was acceptable to council. So I've, I've stated before, if a cul-de-sac with six houses isn't acceptable for that neighborhood, I seriously doubt that a million square foot warehouse, let alone four million square foot of warehouse is. Something that no one's brought up tonight is the designation of B City and Tree City, USA. I recommend you go back and look at the proclamations that were prepared when those awards were provided to the city. I wouldn't say that you're necessarily gonna lose those certifications or those awards. But if I look at this property, I'll look at North Woods over by where the trees have already been demolished. I think of the rezoning of the property west of Airport Access Road, south of forty, east of Dogwood, like seven hundred or four hundred and seventy acres, that I can only imagine is anticipated for warehouses. I don't know what's intended for the west side of Peters. I would envision those would be some type of manufacturing or warehouses. I don't know. Haven't been privy to that. I, like most of the citizens, have become complacent. We don't show up to these meetings. We don't pay attention anymore. The city council has for years, for years, done what the citizens expected. There's been no reason to question council. There's been no reason to challenge the direction that the city's going. I find myself in a position of needing to do that now. Getting sidetracked. No, I'm not getting sidetracked, cause my next point is it's contrary to the wishes and expectations of the citizens of Vandelia. We expect more. We expect you to take our thoughts and considerations into, in the account. Heard tonight from a financial report during the working meeting that the city is quite solvent. There isn't a need for additional revenues. I'm not suggesting that more money isn't good. I'm suggesting that there may be better ways to develop this, to get to those kinds of revenues. There's been limited discussion about the impact of wildlife. As you know, we started the Facebook group to oppose the warehouses. Would again like to thank Ambrose for holding the citizens' meeting on Monday. Going into that meeting, having started, having had someone start that Facebook group about two and a half weeks earlier, we were at fifteen members. We're now at almost three hundred. We hit two hundred and ninety during the meeting tonight. I could not have possibly spread the word and encouraged citizen involvement without their support. So for that, I thank you. There's been discussion of noise and light pollution. I'm not familiar with the phrase downward shining, full cutoff lights. I heard they're required by zone. I heard they're going to comply with that. So I will challenge you. Tonight after council meeting's over. And it's going to get dark. Take a drive down Northwoods. Take a drive down Deer Run. Look at the lights coming off of FedEx, I drove by there, not as bad as it used to be, they've actually turned off some of their lights. Some of the lights that used to face east in the parking lot aren't lit anymore. Take a look at the medical manufacturing company that's down past Kroger. On the assumption that all of those lights. Meet the code as downward shining, full cutoff lights. Probably inadequate. Probably inadequate. There's been talk about jobs. Somebody questioned why we would oppose jobs for a warehouse where people can make forty dollars an hour. And I'm here to tell you that. Amazon has a distribution center and Walmart has a distribution center down in Mason, right behind the Cincinnati Premium Outlets. The job posting for those places say up to. Up to nineteen dollars an hour. Now, I've learned a long time ago to listen to salespeople and be careful what they say. And I've listened to a lot of things that were said here. What I heard tonight was that CSX has a deed restriction, that it can't be used for anything other than commercial. But then what I heard was it's in the contract. So the question becomes, is this in the contract? Or is it in deed? I'll be following up with the county to find out. My guess is it's in, it's in the contract. And that makes sense. Ambrose is not in the habit of developing residential properties. If I was going to sell them property for development, I would buy, I wouldn't have them develop residential, I'd go someplace else. If I wanted to build a warehouse, they're my people. There are wetlands that are on that property. There is wildlife on that property. There are ways to mitigate those impacts. There are resources that are going to have to be expended to extend utilities. There are ways to mitigate those impacts onto the city. I'm going to get controversial. Because things have changed over the years. We used to call. People giving. Politicians in cities bribes. And now we call them partnerships. We call them offsets. We call them donations. You can make a donation to reestablish someplace else. Or to buy another piece of, another parcel of property that has similar characteristics and exchange them by ensuring that it won't be developed later. One of the facilities that. I helped oversee. At the NRC, wanted to build a. Facility in Paducah, Kentucky. There were endangered species on there. But those endangered species lived someplace else in an unprotected area. And the bargain was. We'll buy an equivalent parcel of property over there, put a legitimate deed restriction on there that nobody can ever develop it. So we have the same number of acres protecting the same kinds of species that we did before. I understand that rationale. But that does nothing for the citizens who live by the area that's being demolished. It's not even necessarily required to be in the same. City or township or district. I ask you to consider. The long-range plans for Vandelia. There's been a lot of discussion about what the expectations of, of citizens are. My concern. Not my only concern, but my concern as a citizen. Is what are we doing now? That's going to be irreversible for the future if we decide that it's wrong. You're looking at impacts from one warehouse, we know there are going to be more. What are the, what are the long-term impacts? We don't know. We don't know, because they don't know. Okay, it's so early in the process, they don't know. If it's that or in the process, it's too early in the process to make that decision, make that commitment. You heard the archaeological stuff. I know you're, I. You're going to run into the issue of. Once a warehouse is built on top of it, you're not going to find out if there was anything below it. It's going to be too late. So what do you envision the city of Vandelia to look like five years from now? Ten years from now? Fifty years from now? What do you want Vandelia to be long-term? That's my concern. Thank you.
Pat Rice, ten four hundred Castle Road. I drove home from New York today, and on the way, there's a very large warehouse on the south side of seventy, just east of Springfield. I don't know if anybody's been passed there lately. I picture it being very, very, very much on the same scale and design as this. It is not a human proportion. You drive past it on the expressway and you drive past it and you drive past it. Those big bay doors that number the hundreds on a side are these little tiny dots as you drive past it. That's okay out in a bigger area, it doesn't seem that bad there. But you put that within a couple hundred feet of a house and it is, you're living beside a skyscraper, you might as well be. If you look at the region and we're putting warehouse after warehouse after warehouse, we might as well have a city here, we're going to have the same heat problems. Here are a lot of the other things they brought up, but ask any city, they have trouble with all these rooftops reflecting heat and it's hot. We're going to have the same thing, we're going to have acres, acres, literally many, many, many acres of, you know, gravel tops. It's going to heat this area. What happens with the chemicals of pollution under that increased heat? Where are the trees that have gone that may help mitigate some of that? They planted a couple in front of those warehouses, they're pretty sad little specimens over there, they don't begin to compensate for it. The last thought is, I was driving out of Kroger's. I'm like, there's no way this road can take multiple hundreds of trucks coming out of here. There's a really nice office building to the right as you're heading west, right there, you know, right across from Kroger's. And they've landscaped it pretty, you know, I think they may have already encroached on their property once, or they took out some trees, in any case, there's two lanes, one way and one going the other. If they want to widen that again, you either are on their window, which if I bought that property, I wouldn't be happy about. Or those few trees that are in that drainage area in front of Kroger's, they're history. But there's no way that road is going to come, is going to accommodate what you're describing with hundreds and hundreds of trucks. The bottom line is, if this goes through, I didn't come to Vandelia to live in a city of warehouses. Will I leave immediately? Probably not, will I leave eventually, if it, if that comes to pass, maybe? Because it's not what I want, it's not what Vandelia presented to me. So I think even as a region beyond just Vandelia, we have to look at what's happening around, and it's not good, we're going to be the armpit warehouse of the southwest Ohio. Might be a great business, but not a good place to live.
I'm sorry, I apologize. Be short. Mark and Judy Couch. Residents at ten four forty North Castle Road. Are over in Europe on a pre-planned trip and were unable to attend. They'd like to voice their opposition as well. And then finally, there is one thing that I omitted, and it's related to the traffic issue, and that is consider that the. Ramps for Northwoods. Heading south, both the on-ramp and the off-ramp to seventy-five. The merge lanes are the same merge lanes for the Vandelia exit. We already, already have lots of issues with people trying to cross lanes and merge in that area. Without the additional truck traffic. So that was just one other thing that somebody had pointed out that I had promised but had forgotten to mention, thank you.
Yeah, Don Hutch again, one oh five eight Bristol. The gentleman was up earlier, was talking about people getting involved in the local boards. Like to be set for that. Here tonight we are, we're reactive. People in the community need to start being proactive. In section nine dash two point one of the city charter, we have the ability to remand a zoning decision. I challenge everybody to start getting more involved, I've been absent for a while due to other things, I've been in here on different issues. And I've come to a lot of council meetings where you could hear an echo in here, there's nobody in the. Audience and maybe things like that. Nights, decisions on those days were when we lost our right. To be able to control greater, the land being given away in the manner that it is. We need to get. One-fifth of all the electrical, the electors equal. Signatures to get something to change this. To remand this zoning decision. So it doesn't happen again in the future. We need to be more diligent and come in and work with you guys. We vote for you, we want you to stand up for our rights, but we also need to get more involved. So we don't have to be. Proactive or just reactive, because that's what we're doing tonight. We sit on our hands when we should have been in here making sure that our rights were being protected. And I get this feeling that the people who are making this decision feel offended because. In the few meetings, the one with planning commission and the library, they act as if. It's their right to come here and do this and. All these challenges that we're going to have to put up with when. It's our right. We're the ones with the rights here, not a small handful of people from the other side of the state line coming in here wanting to say, this is our right. No, these are our rights to start being more involved and proactive. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson. All right, is there anyone else who would like to make a comment?
I would, I'll be brief. Dan Martin, one one four, four three zero Castle Road, I used to be at one one four six zero Castle Road, moved in January. A couple of years ago, I had, my cousin lives over in Union and he does a lot of work on cars, in fact, he was just. Hired by the city of Vandelia, his name's Robert, he's the electrical inspector now, he used to work for the county. Anyway, I was over at his house and he was working on my wife's car, doing, me and him were doing brakes on it. And it was an evening where this was probably at least three years ago, maybe a little longer, when just P and G was out there. I was coming home, I, I'd say it was ten, ten-thirty at night and it was a very, very foggy night, when I got across the river. Over off of Frederick, it just, I, I probably couldn't see you mayor in front of me with my lights, it was so foggy. And I'm driving down the roads and I've come that way many times, but I just kind of cut across, I don't even know what road I'm on half the time, I just cut back and forth. There's a couple zigzags to get back and forth over to, to there and. I kind of got puzzled, like where am I at? And. I started, started thinking like, what road am I actually on, am I going the right direction or not, because it was so foggy, I mean, like I said, I could barely see in front of my car. And all of a sudden. It looked like Las Vegas in front of me. And what it was, I got thinking about, like what in the world, am I in a, I mean, I almost felt like I was at a couple. Couple of months ago, I was out in Vegas, me and my wife were out driving, went out to Hoover Dam and went to, I forget what they call it, the Rocks of Fire or something like that. And we were coming back late in, late in the evening back into Vegas and we went with our neighbor and. The, on the way back, you know, driving into the city of Las Vegas from the, from the desert, that's what it reminded me of, the lights were just incredible. And I felt like I was like driving into the Wizard of Oz or something like, you know, and it was so incredibly bright. And then it dawned on me like, oh, that's P and G right there. And I mean, I couldn't see in front of my car, but you could see that probably a mile and a half away. So that's, that's just a small impact of what, and that's, that's just, that's just when they were just building the one plant, when, when P and G was out there by themselves, I, I can't even imagine driving out there now, the lights and stuff that are. And I know that Phil lives out there and, and the property value that he's, he's faced with, that the drop in, you know, my cousin lived out there on Little York Road or Dogleg Road. He, he foreclosed on his property, he's like, it's not worth anything. He left, they moved up to Tip City. So I, I just want, once again, to, first of all, thank you again for listening to all the fine citizens of Vandelia, you can tell this is a community. A community that cares about what happens here, and I know you do too, and I appreciate your time, thank you.
How y'all doing? My name's Tom Trick, eleven thousand North Castle Road. We moved out there in nineteen sixty-one. Before it was even Castle Road, so I've been out there a while. My house is one that has a creek running right under the road. And it hadn't been a whole lot talked about that, but we hear about all these studies that we're going to have. But we don't have any results of these studies. And you look at. Twenty-five, thirty acres of. Building roof and blacktop. Put a three-inch rain on there and you got probably a million and a half gallons of water going somewhere. I got a pretty good idea where it's going, because I see it every time it rains. And it's a lot. And you add that much more to it because there's no place else for it to go. It's going to be a whole lot. The. The creek can't handle it the way it is, with that. Added to it, it's going to be rough, it'll probably end up having to redo the whole tunnel under the road, that'll be an expense that we'll end up paying for one way or another. Not very happy about that, but that's just the way it's going to be. I understand we have to have these studies, but I'd sure like to have some results. And numbers of these studies and actually how many trucks and cars roughly per hour is going to be up and down these roads, I'm going to tell you what. Northwoods ain't going to handle it. And I think before it's all said and done, you're going to be widening that. Overpass over the highway, it's, it's. It's going to be bad, my little brother works at one of the shops out there now in Northwoods. And quitting time comes around and it's horrible. And we haven't even started bringing in warehouses yet, so. I just wanted you to be aware of that, thank you for your time, good luck to you.
All right, is there anyone else who would like to? Make a comment? All right. At this time, we're going to take a brief five-minute recess and then we will resume here shortly. With the city manager's report.
All right.
Next Tuesday, all buddy, bring your.
I will.
Hey, Mayor?
You know, tomorrow I thought was going to be research.
It was great.
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 Okay, if everyone could take their seats, we're going to go ahead and get started again.
Six more years. Six more, not that I'm counting. No, I don't think so.
Mr. Froschauer, that means you too.
Don't think so. Take it easy.
Thanks, Mike. You too.
I got, oh, you cannot.
He said that in a meeting. He said that just.
I'd like to ask Mr. Froschauer to take a seat now. All right, this time, we're going to move on to the city manager's report where we have an information item and an action item. Mr. Wen.
Yes, Your Honor, I will just give you two, a couple of quick updates here. One of them, you know, I'd like to congratulate Chief Follak in the police division on an outstanding open house event along with some of our firefighters and our custodial staff. It was a really good event for all of the community to see the facility. As you know, resident and police officer of Clear Creek Township, Eric Nay, was injured in the line of duty last week and just asked for prayers for him and his family and, of course, all law enforcement and firefighters. An update regarding US 40 paving due to the weather that will not start tonight from 8:00 till 6:00 a.m., that'll be postponed. It'll start Wednesday, 7:20, and that'll go from 8:00 p.m. to 6:00 a.m. That's paving the top course from airport access out west. There will be an officer on scene to control traffic and be there for the security of that. Also, this Friday, we have an employee appreciation event. That's Pizza in the Park, 11:30 to 1:00 p.m. on Friday at Hellkey Park. And one information item that is there, council established a summer schedule for council meetings. Special meeting will be held Monday, August 1st, 5:15 p.m. for BZA and planning commission items, followed by a city council meeting at 6:30 p.m. The next scheduled city council meeting will be Monday, August 15th at 7:00 p.m. with the study session beginning at 5:30. The end.
All right, we have an action item where Councilman Follak requested that we amend the agenda to appoint Mr. Dave Arnold to the planning commission. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by Councilman Blakeslee to approve the appointment of Dave Arnold to the planning commission. Are there any comments from council? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. We have no old business, and that brings us to our first resolution of the night, that being Resolution 22-R-50, Mr. McDonald by title only.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement to provide electric service to the Dogleg Road sanitary sewer lift station with AES Ohio in the amount of $71,381.11.
Thank you, Mr. Wen.
Thank you very much, Your Honor. I testified on this earlier today in the study session. This is part of the utility extension over to Dogleg Road. It was included in the project scope. AES requires $71,381.11 before work can begin. That is to put Phase III electric out for that sanitary lift station.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 22-R-50 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follak and a second by Vice Mayor Lewis to approve Resolution 22-R-50 as presented. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have Resolution 22-R-51. Mr. McDonald?
A resolution approving a financial contribution to the Vandelia Development Corporation.
Mr. Wen.
Thank you, Your Honor. The requested funding will support a recent grant approval for project quarantine. The company anticipates creating 60 jobs in the city of Vandelia in the first 12 months of opening. The anticipated building construction cost will be $13,500,000 approximately, and this will be the company's Midwest headquarters. The city of Vandelia recently won an edge grant from Montgomery County in the amount of $150,000 to support this project as well.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution 22-R-51.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakeslee and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve Resolution 22-R-51. Are there any comments from council? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have Resolution 22-R-52.
A resolution approving the Vandelia provision living Section 1 plat.
Thank you, Mr. Wen.
Your Honor, the applicant, PVL Investments, has applied for a final plat for the 18.302 acres of land located at 3900 Park Center Drive, being Lot 3 of the Redwood-Vandelia preliminary plat. The planning commission voted three to zero to recommend approval of the final plat with one condition, which is listed.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I'll move to approve Resolution 22-R-52 with the condition of planning commission.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Follak and a second by Councilwoman Fairst to approve Resolution 22-R-52 with the condition as noted. Any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. Next, we have Resolution 22-R-53.
A resolution establishing the One Ohio Opioid Settlement Fund.
Thank you, Mr. Wen.
Your Honor, the Auditor of State and Ohio Revised Code require that the city's share of the One Ohio funds be placed in a separate special revenue fund and used only for the approved purposes as required by the One Ohio Memorandum of Understanding. The new fund shall be maintained separately from all other city funds. To account for the revenue and expenditures and the funds received will be used to promote an effective and meaningful method in abating the opioid epidemic effects in the city of Vandelia. The city shares approximately $8,300 per year over an 18-year period.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Make a motion that we approve Resolution 22-R-53.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Blakeslee and a second by Councilwoman Fairst to approve Resolution 22-R-53. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. We have one ordinance in its first reading, that being Ordinance 22-29. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances and resolutions as part of the various component codes of the codified ordinances, providing for the adoption and publication of new matter in the updated and revised codified ordinances and replacing ordinances and resolutions in conflict therewith.
Thank you, Mr. Wen.
Your Honor, this is largely a matter of housekeeping and posting the appropriate ordinances in compliance with Ohio Revised Code. I'll let the law director's testimony stand.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Your Honor, I move that we approve Ordinance 22-29 in its first reading.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by Councilman Blakeslee to approve Ordinance 22-29 in its first reading. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakeslee?
Yes.
Councilmember Follak?
Yes.
Councilmember Fairst?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven zero. That brings us to ordinances in our second reading, the first one being Ordinance 22-13. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance approving a planned unit development, preliminary development plan, and associated zoning map change for copperfield towns on the land, excuse me, on land generally located at 3330 Mulberry Road.
Thank you, Mr. Wen.
Your Honor, the applicant, DDC Management, has applied for a planned unit development preliminary plan for a single 11-acre parcel located at 3330 Mulberry Road. The applicant is proposing to construct 87 owner-occupied attached townhome units in both two-unit buildings or three-unit configurations on the site with a density of eight units per acre. The planning commission voted four to one to recommend approval of the proposed preliminary planned unit development plan with the following conditions. One, Mulberry Road right-of-way is improved in accordance with City Code Section 1234.09F on responsibility for thoroughfare improvements east of their entrance to ensure the city has infrastructure in place for future development. Number two, instead of Mulberry right-of-way improvements made west of their entrance, a vegetative screen with a variety of evergreen trees along the access road ramp to better increase sound dampening for this community and surrounding areas.
Thank you, and I believe Vice Mayor Lewis has a couple of questions for clarification.
Just real quick, what have we done to, because I think our concerns relative to this were the potential traffic issues, and while I don't think that this specific development is going to generate those, but I hate the thought of it spurring additional development and not us being able to keep up with the roadwork, if you will. And I was kind of out of the loop, and I wondered where we were on that.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Lewis. If you were to look east down Mulberry Road, there's a significant curve as you travel that. One of the ideas was if the right-of-way had to be amplified, if it had to be straightened, that there's an opportunity right now to negotiate a purchase of the property that punches out and would extend to Dixie Drive.
Can we secure that option?
That is actually under negotiation with a purchase agreement pending. And so, we opened that in a public meeting, and the council authorized me to negotiate that, and so, we're continuing to negotiate it. From a planning standpoint, I think it's a very good move for the eventual improvement, and then there's a potential that, in that curve in Mulberry, that, you know, you'd redesignate that as Old Mulberry. And that's really just one part of the, I think, some of the concerns that we heard with this development. But as far as thoroughfare planning, I think that's an improvement for the future.
It begs the question, is it prudent for us to approve this before we secure that or vice versa? So, if we go forward with this project or the authority to do so, and we don't have that, we're a little bit behind the eight ball.
I never considered the acquisition of that property off of, you know, in question to be done as a response to this development. It was for the ultimate build-out of multifamily or medium family, medium-density residential along Mulberry Road in the future. So, I mean, I don't think time and/or the money to put that infrastructure in place is programmed out to resolve this issue.
My fear is with the rapidity of what I've seen, when some building was initiated, that it spurred quick development in the environs, you know, contiguous, and I'm just voicing the fear that this may create the impetus for it to, and then we would be, we have the danger of being in a difficult position related to that lot, that's all.
Okay. I thought somebody else had. Anyone else have a comment?
Are we in discussion yet? I mean, we're not, I just don't think we're ready. I don't see it as an inappropriate use of that land necessarily, but I think the ability to safely travel that direction and access to that property is not safe.
the ability to safely travel that direction and access to that property is, is not safe. And I think we have that obligation to make that viable before we allow this much transit on that road, so.
Did you have anything else? Mr. Wett?
No, your honor.
No, I, I mean, we should open the, the public hearing really and hear from anybody before we, you know, have further discussion with council.
Okay.
All right. At the advice of our law director, we will now open up a public hearing. So if anyone would like to comment on this particular ordinance, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and your comment.
Hi, Tom Grace, ten-four-hundred Castle Road. The more I do this, the better I get. Hope it doesn't become a habit. I would, my ears were peaked when I heard the medium-density residential. Please be careful you don't end up in a bind, because some of that property between Seventy and Mulberry would really look good with a warehouse to some people. So just be careful. You're fighting one issue on Castle, you're probably be fighting more issues as the city progresses. Make sure you don't put yourself in the same bind in the future. Just something to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grace. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment?
Good evening, council. John Bills, President of DDC Management here as the applicant for it. First off, just want to say thank you for the opportunity to come back before you and talk about this project. We are excited at the opportunity to be able to, to come into Vandelia and partner with the city and try to move this project forward. It's, we've been looking in the area for some time. We actually chose this location as we started to look for a project here because it met the, the future land use. That's really why, you know, we looked to that. We didn't want to come to a strong opposition. We wanted to try to come into a circumstance where we were meeting what the, the city had put out on record as for what they were looking for, and really was our goal here. Anytime we go into a new city, we want to be a good neighbor and a good partner, and try to deliver what the cities put out to the public that they want for a project. And we really feel like we've done that in this instance. While it is, I think, just under eight units to the acre, you know, the, the medium density that I think the, the future land use does show going on down through Mulberry is up to twelve units. So, you know, we're coming in just under two-thirds of what the city had said they wanted for that area and, and the density for it. And, and we heard when we were at, at planning and zoning, each of the conditions that they recommended were willing to, to abide by, and again, tried to give the city what they've said that they wanted for there, and were more than willing to cooperate and agree to those conditions if we were fortunate enough to move this project forward. And then we heard loud and clear about the traffic at the last, and that we were going to table it for ninety days to give staff a, a chance to take a look at that. And, and I think, you know, we heard a little bit of that tonight, and it was, we did the same on our side. We, we went back and we took a look at at least the preliminary data for the traffic on it. And, and the reality is, while there is some concern down the road, potentially, if there were other multifamily that goes in down there, we can understand the concern on down there. But for, for this instance, for what we're here for, it's eighty-seven units. When you look at the data, when we do the traffic counts for it, it's adding thirty trips in the morning peak hour, like in an hour period on there. It's a little over four hundred in a twenty-four hour period, between four and five hundred in a twenty-four hour period. And in the afternoon, it's a peak of thirty-nine per hour, which for people like myself that aren't traffic experts, the, the result of that is it's negligible. Like, the impact of this on the surrounding area does not have negligible in, or any kind of significant impact to this project. I can't speak to other developments and what may or may not come forward to you in the future, but when you look at this, it, it is negligible to the surrounding area. So when looking at it, you know, that traffic isn't even technically part of this, part of the city's own ordinance and the process. That's something that would be discussed, not at zoning, but at the, the future when we go through for final engineering, and we'd work with staff like we would in any municipality and try to work through and make sure. But we're pretty confident in the numbers. I believe staff had given us some similar feedback that the, the counts here really didn't warrant any issue from this one community. So I just urge you to take that into consideration. While I, I respect the needing to plan for the future in that, I, I think it is labeled for thoroughfare down the road, and the city can work towards that, but shouldn't impact the property owner that owns it today and their ability to try to move forward with a project or our ability to come in and assist with that and do it. So we really just ask that you think about the, the good that it can do, the fact that we're trying to work with you on all the items that have been brought to us to date. I think we've compromised and done, and hopefully we can figure out how to move this project forward. We think it could be good for the community.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Good evening. Mark Ferneus, twelve-thirty-two Bramley Court. Just reminding the council of my previous concerns. First, the builder they've selected is not known for doing high-quality builds, and so I'm concerned about the long-term debt, or deterioration of the properties, which will degrade the, the superior quality of Vandelia. Second, the hellky pop school, hellky student population is a concern with these most likely attracting younger families, and so planning for that. And then third, the future costs that the city might incur with roadways or noise abatement barriers. And so I think at the very least, the developer should be required to put in a, a good berm to block noise from the Seventy and, as well as the off-ramp to the airport access road. So, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment?
Hi, good, good evening. Kyle Day, five-twelve Ashbury Farms Drive. Live really close to this, and just wanted to go on ahead and voice my opposition to this occurring. Don't know if the council or the planning commission ever considered possibly single-family dwelling units versus multifamily dwelling units, but maybe an opportunity there. However, I do have high concerns over not only the traffic, but the, also the other parts of the infrastructure, the electricity, the water, all that stuff that has to go in there, as well as any other things that could cause complications with new developments coming in there. So just wanted to kind of voice, be a voice of my neighbors around me that live in the neighborhood and hope that the council take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to make a comment? Being done, I'll close the public hearing. Your honor. Councilman Falek?
So I just have a few things. I don't want to belabor what a couple council members have already said. But looking at our zoning code and, and the review criteria for PUDs, which this is a request, there are four areas that I think that I have concerns with, which is why I'll ultimately be voting against the request. But one is about the, Section C, which reads in part, "Provides accessibility to public roads that are adequate to carry the traffic. That shall be imposed upon them by the proposed development." And I think we've established that the existing road infrastructure is a township, a rural township road that has not been designed or intended to support medium-density residential. It already serves as secondary access point to two single-family residential neighborhoods with over two hundred homes. Approximately eleven hundred feet of the existing roadway west of the proposed development to Peters Pike is not under control of the city of Vandelia, which I would prefer to see us control that roadway before, before additional development along Mulberry, especially if we need that as an access point to residential developments. Letter F of that section says, "Shall include adequate open space landscaping and other improvements." And as I brought up on the last time this was in front of us, I have a serious concern about sound mitigation affecting this neighborhood. I don't believe that the proposed evergreen trees along the access ramp or the water feature that's proposed in the retention pond is sufficient to mitigate the sound of vehicular traffic along the access road ramp, especially, I mean, current conditions, but especially knowing what the build-out of west of I seven, west of the airport access road is going to be with, with the commercial development out there. The vehicle traffic and, and semi-traffic traveling that ramp access is only going to increase in the years ahead. And I think that if that is not mitigated as part of this development, which I know last time I asked the developer or the applicant, if they were with a sound barrier would be opportunity, or if they'd be willing to entertain the opportunity with a sound wall, it was a, a no, because that, that expense, which, based on estimates that have been given, could be up to a quarter of a million dollars for the city in the future. And I don't think that's something we should straddle future council with. Lastly, my, the last one is a letter L. Well, actually, letter K, and the applicant just spoke to it. I had done some basic math, and I said about five hundred cars a day in and out of that neighborhood, which, which his statement was, I believe, four hundred, five hundred. And even if half of those cars traveled through the Copperfield neighborhood, we're adding two hundred to two hundred and fifty cars going through an existing residential neighborhood because they choose to go straight at the access point versus east or west on Mulberry and cutting across to Stone Quarry. And I think that's something to be considered, because that development or that neighborhood and the impact of that additional traffic in that neighborhood. And then lastly, I just, letter L, which is, has buildings designed with sufficient architectural variety and exterior surface complexity, but include elements that serve to visually unify the development. And I don't, you know, looking at the proposed mock-up that they've provided, and I know that this is somewhat subjective, but I don't consider the proposed product architecturally, to contain architectural variety or an exterior surface complexity. And then I just want to conclude by saying with all this, it's not that I don't agree with the comprehensive plan and the intended use of that area. I just don't think that this proposal is in the best interest and meets all the criteria of the, of the PUD requirements in our code. Thank you.
Any other comments? Can I have a motion?
Yes, your honor. I move that we approve Ordinance twenty-two dash thirteen in its second reading with conditions set forth.
Target.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Woods and a second by Councilman Ayers to approve Ordinance twenty-two dash thirteen in its second reading with the conditions as noted. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Falek?
No.
Councilmember Farce?
No.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
No.
Mayor Herbs?
No, and the motion fails four to three.
Three to four.
Three to four, I'm sorry. Next we have Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-seven. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance approving a planned unit development, final plan for sub-area A of the Redwood Vandelia development for land generally located at thirty-nine-hundred Park Center Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Wett.
Your honor, PVL, the applicant, PVL Investments, has submitted an application requesting a final planned unit development plan for property located in the southeast corner of Webster Street and Park Center Drive, specifically at thirty-nine-hundred Park Center Drive. The proposed final development plan is for lot three of the Redwood Planned Unit Development. This eighteen-point-three-acre parcel is planned for a seventy-one-thousand-five-hundred-square-foot assisted living and memory care facility with thirteen independent living villas. The planning commission voted three to zero to recommend approval of the final development plan with conditions. And I'll pull those up, because I didn't write them in the blue letter. And I've listed those on the screen.
They're also specifically listed in the ordinance itself.
Yes, thank you. All right, since this is an ordinance in its second reading, I'll open a public hearing. If anyone would like to comment on this particular ordinance, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comment. Being done, I'll close the public hearing. Can I have a motion?
I move that we approve Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-seven in its second reading.
Second. I have a motion by Councilwoman Farce and a second by Councilman Falek to approve Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-seven in its second reading. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Falek?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven-zero. Next we have an emergency ordinance, being emergency ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-eight. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance approving individual assessment amounts and directing the finance director or her designee to certify the amounts to the county auditor for collection and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mr. Wett.
Your honor, this emergency ordinance assesses properties for delinquent accounts related to stormwater fees, trash, trash collection, and delinquent sewer and water.
Thank you. And since this is an emergency ordinance, I'll open a public hearing. If anyone would like to make a comment, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comment. Being done, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Your honor, I'll move to approve Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-eight as an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Falek and a second by Councilwoman Farce that we approve Ordinance twenty-two dash twenty-eight as an emergency. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Falek?
Yes.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven-zero. Next we have emergency ordinance twenty-two dash thirty. Mr. McDonald?
An ordinance amending Vandelia Code Section six-seven-eight-oh-two carrying concealed weapons and six-seventy-eight-oh-four improperly handling of a firearm in a motor vehicle in order to be compliant with new state law and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Wett?
Your honor, the Ohio General Assembly and Governor Dewine enacted new legislation earlier this year that changed the Ohio revised code on carrying concealed weapons. That's RC twenty-nine-twenty-three dot one-two, and improper handling of a firearm in a motor vehicle, RC twenty-nine-twenty-three dot one-six. This legislation took effect on June thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Therefore, I propose the Vandelia codified ordinances in six-seven-eight-dot-zero-two carrying concealed weapons and six-seven-eight-dot-zero-four improper handling of a firearm in a motor vehicle be revised to mirror the changes made in state law.
Thank you. And since this is an emergency ordinance, I'll open a public hearing. If anyone would like to make a comment on emergency ordinance twenty-two dash thirty, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record and your comment. Being done, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Your honor, I'll move that we approve Ordinance twenty-two thirty as an emergency.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Lewis and a second by Councilman Blakesley to approve emergency ordinance twenty-two dash thirty. Are there any comments? Call the roll.
Councilmember Farce?
Yes.
Councilmember Ayers?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Councilmember Blakesley?
Yes.
Councilmember Falek?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lewis?
Yes.
Mayor Herbs?
Yes, and the motion carries seven-zero. That brings us to reports from boards and commissions. We have the Civil Service Commission meeting minutes of March twenty-ninth, the Civil Service Commission meeting minutes of May nineteenth, and the Civil Service Commission meeting minutes of June thirtieth. Are there any comments? Being done, they stand approved. And that brings us to the June listing and the amount of two million thirty-four thousand five hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-eight cents, and the list of June expenses over fifty thousand. We also have the June purchase card detail and the amount of thirty-two thousand seven hundred and three dollars and seventy-six cents. And it brings us to council comments. We'll start with Mr. McDonald. Mr. Wett?
I'd just like to thank everybody for the good discourse. I, I would say that being able to have that in a good and respectful manner is a great sign of a good republic in a very well-developed country, and I'm thankful for that.
Thank you. Mr. Ayers?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilman Falek?
Just two things, since this is our last meeting before a retirement, I just wanted to congratulate Brian Fox, who is retiring from the city with forty-one years of service at the end of the month. And he's, I know he's starting the service department, and I think he, and right now he's in the Parks and Recreation Department as our mechanic. So congratulations to Mr. Fox on his retirement, and thank you for your four decades of service. And then last, just to thank the city manager, Mr. Knife, Councilwoman Farce, and Vice Mayor Lewis, and myself. Councilwoman Fairst and Vice Mayor Lewis and myself had the opportunity to visit the Tri-Cities wastewater treatment facility last Friday. And it's just, it was interesting to see that operation. Mr. Knife has a lot of excitement for treating of wastewater, so that's good. It's an acquired taste, not acquired taste, acquired skill. Sorry.
Strike that from the record.
Yeah. But I just think, I mean, to see that operation and more importantly, to see the challenges that lie ahead of us with some very large improvements at that facility to continue providing that service to not only our residents, but the residents of Tip City and Huber Heights in that joint venture. So, thank you for that opportunity to city manager and Ms. Leiter and Mr. Cron.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Fairst?
Just to copy on Mr. Follak's, it was extremely interesting to go through that tour of the Tri-Cities wastewater treatment. I jokingly said, people said, "What are you doing Friday morning?" And I told them what I was doing. Afterward, I said, "It really was interesting and exciting and very important that we see," as Mr. Follak said, "all the challenges that are in front of us so that we, when the decision is made to spend money in that direction, we can see how well it's warranted." So, that's all today. Thank you.
Councilman Blakeslee?
Yes, I echo that Brian Fox will be definitely missed for decades. That's a long time. He's served the city well. And that just kind of segues me into the quality of the employees that we have in the city. And that we can appreciate the fact that anywhere in the city, you're going to be safe. Because there are two incidences that were recently pointed out, that a fall at the Vandalia Rec Center and quick action by the staff jumped in, not professional, but they have some first aid trainings. They just kind of went to their fellow citizen and helped out until the squad could get there. And just really proud of everybody doing a job above and beyond. And the same thing with Officer Blackford responded and also identified and recognized the fact that there was carbon oxide and quick action called the fire department. And if it hadn't been, that person wouldn't have been here today. So, again, kudos to all those that serve and serve us well. And echo what city manager Went said about the republic. Really appreciate all the citizens coming out and voicing their opinion, and it really makes a difference. And I appreciate others saying about getting involved, and that's what it's really about. And when we said the pledge, when you heard this room echo the pledge, it just really hit you that we are one. And despite our differences and our opinions, we are one. And that's why I'm proud to be serving here.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman Woods?
Yes, I just want to thank Chief Oldhouse and his department for supporting the Clear Creek Township officer who was wounded this past week and everything they did to try to support his family. His efforts really says a lot for taking care of one of our residents.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lewis?
It's all along the same lines, but I want to thank, yeah, the citizens and our We operate in a vacuum here about 85% of the time. And the more people, our citizens, the public are involved in whatever we do, whether it's finances or zoning or exceptions to zoning, we value your input greatly. And many times, we can disagree, but it's, as Mr. Went said, it's wonderful to have the opportunity to have some intellectual discourse and to disagree or to agree. I fully believe that whatever it is, we will ultimately end up with a better decision and a better way forward, the more input that we receive. And it's, and that alone makes this a lot more worthwhile, although I could do without a three-and-a-half-hour meeting. But I thank everybody for their participation.
All right, well, thank you. The only thing I wanted to mention is, Mr. Went alluded to it earlier in the meeting, is he and I had a conference call with Congressman Turner's office Friday afternoon, late Friday afternoon. And it appears that we are in all likelihood going to get that $1.33 million to put into the Ring Road to start diverting more truck traffic away from Vandalia and get it on the backside of the airport. I think what's most important about that $1.33 million, that is the money that the city of Vandalia taxpayers are not going to have to pay. Because if we didn't get an earmark like this, it would be on our backs to pay for it. So, I appreciate Mr. Went and his staff for being very proactive in going after this because it will greatly improve the traffic situation in our area. And that's all I have. So, after three-and-a-half hours, this meeting is adjourned.